All right, so it's seven o'clock. Everyone is here, everyone is ready, so we're gonna start the meeting. If you would please, Ms. Christian, if you will give us the prayer and the pledge allegiance.
Thank you, sir. We pray for all the people who lost a loved one during this coronavirus pandemic. We pray for all who are ill with the COVID-19. May they overcome it. We pray for our doctors, nurses, and all hospital personnel. We pray for our police and our firemen and all the first responders. We pray for our city to overcome this pandemic, amen. Pledge allegiance.
Hold on, let me get to the screen here. Okay, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Heidi, communications.
The Genesee County Farmers Market submitted their application for public market. This would be every Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from June 5th to October 30th. Tuesdays and Thursdays are nine to four, and Fridays are nine AM to five PM.
All right, does anyone have any questions in related to the farmers market?
I do.
Bob, go ahead.
Yes, I'm a little confused. I thought this was a bid function and the application comes from Genesee Country Farmers Market, Inc., which is a New York corporation. And that corporation, the address of service is eighty-nine North Main Street, Oakfield, which is a an old home with four apartments in it, which is kind of confusing. And then when you, on the application, Beth Kep signed the Hold Harmless as Secretary of the Corporation. But when you go to the website, apparently Schwab Farms from Medina, who operates a farmers market in Medina under Schwab Farms, and one in Niagara Falls, they're the ones running it. So I'm not entirely sure our, is bid signing this in the name of Schwab Farms? The Schwab Farms who's leasing it? The corporation, Genesee Country Farmers Market? I know that eighty-nine North Main Street, Oakfield, that's a privately owned home with apartments in it. I know that isn't the corporate headquarters. So it's all kind of confusing. I discussed it with Marty and he assured me we'd get some answers, so.
Okay, Marty, would you like Beth to answer that question? Or do you want to jump in first and then have Beth answer it?
Beth could step in. Beth and I have talked, so she's prepared to discuss those questions.
Okay, Beth, if you want to, can you help us out here?
Yeah, sure. So the Genesee Country Farmers Market Association is, they're technically their own entity. And then, I guess in collaboration, the bid has always, our executive director or one of our board members sits on their board of directors. So I was just recently nominated as their secretary to help assist. And that's why I helped fill out the application for them. And Schwab Farms is actually the president of the board currently for the public market.
Why does he use the apartment house as a?
I'm not actually sure I can get you the valid address that we have even all of the vendors sending all of the information. It's a P.O. box that they operate under.
Right.
And I can get that over to you.
So it's still, they're still in really close collaboration with bid, in other words. But they've always been, it's always been a separate entity. We always assumed bid was always running it from day one, so it's always been a separate entity?
Correct.
Okay, and you are aware that, you know, we're gonna work with bid, I guess, because that parking lot might not be available in two or three years from now?
Yes, and the Public Market Board is aware of that. We were advised that after the summer of 2020, they would have to look at a different location.
Yeah, I'm not so sure it's that soon, but I mean, we're gonna work with you. We're not gonna just leave you. The city's gonna try to help find a better or equivalently good location. But again, until that construction, if it does ever start, due to the delays we have now because of issues, but, you know, COVID-19 issues. But I think we have at least a season or two that we don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
We want to get ahead of the game. Bob, is there any other questions you have for her?
Yeah, yeah, is Schwab Farms then in effect managing the farmers market?
The owner of Schwab Farms is the president currently of their board.
Okay, does bid get one hundred percent of the revenue from the farmers market?
No, we get zero.
You get zero revenue?
Yes.
Where's the revenue go?
To, what do you, their board has their own operating treasurer, their own accounting.
So they charge for the, they charge for this? They charge the people to vend? I mean, they charge them and then? That money goes to where? Does it go to offset the costs? Is this a nonprofit or what are they doing?
So that goes to their organization to help run everything. And I can get you the more specifics. They just hired actually a brand new market manager. And he's going about things a little bit different, but similar to the past with the application. And I can get you a copy of that.
Yeah, we're gonna need more, I mean, it's, we got some time. I think we're gonna need more information to just clear up a lot of the unknowns here. If we can just get some answers to that. Bob, if you want to make a list of, or send an email to Marty or to Beth directly and copy Marty in it, so that he can follow.
Yeah, I'll go through, I'll go through Marty and let him forward it. But myself, I'd like to just table this item this evening until we can discuss it further.
Yeah, when is the first date that it's supposed to be?
June 5th.
Yeah, June 5th. So at this point, it's really just an application. We're not really, we haven't, it's rare that we stop people from doing it as long as it doesn't cost us any money. But in this case, I understand Bob's concern. We're using city property and we thought it was going to bid. And I know bid benefits by bringing people downtown.
Correct.
But I think we're gonna need a little more information as to what they're doing. If they're making a profit off city property, we need to know how that's working out and what the process is.
Beth, is the post office box one sixty-seven Oakfield, New York?
No.
Okay, because that's what, that's what the corporation's filed under with the state of New York.
Okay.
It's file one sixty-seven Oakfield, eighty-seven North Main Street, Oakfield, which I find a little problematic because they're not in the city of Batavia. And bid is a downtown function, downtown organization.
Yeah, if we could, if we can get some answers to that and get them to Marty and then, you know, and then we'll get them all forwarded to all of council so we can see that. And we'll just put this on hold. We can bring it back at the next meeting and get it done way before June. But just because there's some questions there, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Bob, for noticing that. I mean, it's something that would have come back eventually. It's good to find out as soon as possible and get it cleared up. Anyone else have any questions or concerns on the, on the bid farmers market? Okay, what's the next one?
The next one is the Batavia Business Improvement District is looking to hold BeerTavia on Saturday, August 8th. This would be in the parking lot at Bank and Elva from two to six PM.
Okay, anybody have any questions on that?
I do.
Yeah, Bob.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not against for or against this item, but I just had some concerns about liability. I've asked this question in the past. So today, Marty had given me the name of the agency and I spoke with the person from the agency. And they stated that the only way we can fully indemnify ourselves is in advance require all the vendors to submit a certificate of insurance, naming the city as additional named insured.
Which we do.
All of individual vendors.
Yes, so, oh, sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
And that they would have to have dram shop insurance for pouring alcohol, not just general liability. Because general liability doesn't cover in the event that someone has an alcohol-related accident. So that they would, they would submit their certificates of insurance in advance and with dram shop coverage for the event.
Okay, Beth?
Yes, so every BeerTavia event, just as an organization, just so you're aware of everything that we do, we apply as an organization for a one-day permit. That's through New York State Liquor Authority. The bid itself holds our own liability insurance policy that also lists the city of Batavia as additional insured. On top of that, we pay an additional premium for an endorsement specifically for that event because it has alcohol at it. On top of that, like Bob is referring to, we require that every single vendor, whether you're a brewery, a food vendor, somebody just coming in to sell tchotchkes, every single vendor has to supply us with their own additional liability policy listing the bid and the city of Batavia as additional insured.
Do they also carry the dram shop insurance for the invite?
So all of the brewers do. I have not seen it for food vendors.
Okay, but food vendors don't pour alcohol, do they?
Correct.
Okay, is that good with you, Marty?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so they supply everything to you, Beth? And then you guys take out your additional policy on top of it?
Yes, yep, and we have turned away vendors in the past. They are required to have that prior to the event or they're not allowed to be there.
So they do that, they have their own insurance and you have a whole insurance on top of the insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
And we also abide by rules and regulations that were forwarded to us. We purchased the perimeter fencing. We only allow one main entrance and exit. We hire additional security for checking IDs.
Yep, yeah, no, that is a problem. My only concern was insurance liabilities and knowing that everybody's on board, including the agency, which, you know, I contacted Marty right after speaking to the agent, relayed everything with him. And I said, and the rest of that, the agent wanted to talk to Marty about it further, so. That's all I had.
Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, Gino, I raised my hand, did you see it?
No, yeah, I see it, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I have never agreed to this function and I'm not gonna agree to it again this year. I'm sorry, Beth.
That's okay, and I will just let you know that obviously we're in the middle of a pandemic, so our board of directors doesn't even know that we will be hosting this event. That's on our agenda for tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And I can let you know further.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense. I mean, we're, everybody's planning, but we're not sure how it's gonna open up and it's, we were on, we have several calls planned for this week. Marty does, and I'll be listening in too. And I think Jay will probably be in on a few of them in reference to how to open up our region. They're gonna try to open up regionally. So that's all to be determined. It's so early, it's not even, just letting you know that they're starting to talk about it. That's about as far as I can go with it at this point. And there's one other, anyone else have any questions on BeerTavia before? Okay, the next one is the liquor license.
Yep, this is actually just an amendment to the Islands Hawaiian Grill liquor license. They're just looking to allow live music and there were no objections from the police department.
And I see where it says live music, they're talking acoustic? That's more like guitar playing?
Guitars, yeah, yeah.
Not talking about large bands outside in front and disrupting a whole Main Street or anything, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that?
Well, I just want to comment on it. They, they own the property, the sidewalk inside the fence. Outside the fence, the city property. In the past, there was a problem with some of the DJs coming in, driving a vehicle up on the sidewalk, running cords through the concourse doors and setting up their DJ platform and all that on the city sidewalk without city permission. So other than that, you know, I just, I don't want to see a recurrence of that because then it involves the city and other people and it's an uncomfortable situation.
Well, we'll have to handle that on a case-by-case basis. And obviously, if that happens, though, you can send the police down there and have them tell them to please get off the sidewalk and have them move inside. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they can do it with city permission with an event application, you know, if they follow the process, so.
Right, I don't think that's what they're, I think this was more of them having like Eli Fish does, where in the corner of the building, they have kind of a soft guitar playing or some kind of music playing in the background and not really a loud rock band kind of blaring thing. But again, that's what they said is acoustic guitar is what I saw acoustic on the application. So we'll have to, like I say, if it gets too loud or out of hand, that's disruptive. We can go down and ask them to please stop it. So anything else on that liquor license amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, the next city council business meeting will be held on Monday, May 11th, seven PM. At this point, it will probably be another video Zoom meeting. Here's an important update. And I'm gonna share the screen with you real quick as I talk about it. Hold on. These are the two websites for the 2020 census. You can go to i2020census.gov or you can go to 2020census.gov. If you go to the 2020 census, you get this page and you click Respond. And it takes you to the Start Questionnaire page. Or if you go to the My 2020 Census page, it brings you to the Start Questionnaire page, okay?
Yeah, the flag up, Gene.
I was just.
I'm sorry, I thought the flag was down. Hold on, I'm gonna go back. Okay, can you see the?
We can see you now.
Hold on, can you see the webpage now?
No.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now you can see it?
There you go, Gene.
Okay, so if you go to the 2020, My 2020 Census, or you go to, that's where you're gonna get the regular 2020census.com will take you here. If you go to my2020census.gov, it's not dot com, it's dot gov. And I'll bring that back up here. Can you see that on the screen now, the webpage is?
Yes.
Sir.
It said, can you see where it says my2020census.gov on there, ringing?
Correct.
Okay, these are the two webpages. The top one is the preferred one, the word my in front of the 2020census.gov, because that one will take you directly to this page, if you can see it. It's the, then you just hit the Start Questionnaire. And if you, they mailed you a piece of paper. If you don't have that piece of paper, you just click this, I do not have the census ID here. And it goes into, obviously, you're in the United States. And it goes into, asks you your street address and it walks you right through it. Okay, so again, I'm gonna put this up here. These are the two, the webpages, my2020census.gov and 2020census.gov. And I'm gonna stop the share. I'm gonna ask Jay Gazelle to jump in here because Jay wants to tell you how important this is.
Good evening, folks. Thanks, Gino. As you know, every ten years, we need to do as part of a U.S. Constitution into the Constitution that we are required to fill out and complete a United States census form. So for the 2020 census, which for me will be the fifth time I've been working on a complete county committee in my career, we're looking at trying to get across the counties as it's vital to us. Our 2010 census number was sixty thousand and seventy-nine people. Unofficially, right now, as of 2019, we are at fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty. So we've lost people representation-wise and both potentially funding-wise into the future. If our response rate is not at best, is not as good as or better than what we did in the 2010 census, which was approximately a seventy percent response rate. Somewhat reflective also, a little higher here in Genesee County. I think we might have been at seventy-three percent. If Felipe's on, he can fill in all the details. Basically, right now, Genesee County residents in general have about a fifty-two percent response rate to the site that Gino just showed you. That's, excuse me, in terms of people filling out the forms and sending them back. We have another forty-five percent, excuse me, in terms of, as part of that, as far as internet responses. So that is very vital in this, in this reporting process and this deletion process. Understand also that in this community and right now, our profile includes and indicates that there's about almost nineteen percent of us, myself included, are sixty-five plus. Again, a vital statistic in terms of how this community is both profiled, but also as far as the official count in what is normally a fairly high rate of participation in things like the census for, now, we senior citizens. It's a nonpartisan issue, obviously. Realistically, the state already is slated to most likely lose at least one congressional seat for, after the 2020 census. We could be in, on the throes of actually losing a second seat as far as the eighteen million people that are ostensibly here in the state of New York. Obviously, two other things that come, become very critical with regard to this are what happens as far as federal funding is concerned, also how we're ranked as a community, both, as you know, with Steve Hyde and company as a metropolitan area, in a metropolitan S M S A region that includes Buffalo and Rochester. And also what again happens with regard to now, you know, our twenty-seventh congressional district as far as the future is concerned and where we end up with regard to when redistricting occurs after the 2020 census. So again, what we've been trying to do, and obviously, C O V I D nineteen has taken over pretty much everything in terms of notoriety, headlines, and everything else. But I noticed that on Saturday, Brian Quinn and Felipe actually put an article in the newspaper, the Daily News, with regard to, you know, where we are so far. And one of the key things Marty and I have been talking about is what our response rate is in the city of Batavia in particular, the seat, the county seat, but also the center geographically and business-wise of the county in general. And for us in particular, we've got three wards that are somewhat underperforming already in this, in terms of the self-response rate, which overall for the city right now is at about forty-seven point seven percent. The fifth and sixth wards in particular, and a little portion of the second ward are under those numbers, that number, that forty-seven percent. In fact, Ward Five right now, according to what Felipe has statistically, the self-response rate is only forty, forty point two percent. So whatever you folks can do, whatever we can do with the Complete Count Committee, but you guys as their representatives, as the elected body, as the policymakers, can do to encourage more people and as many people as possible to fill out their form. Even me, it only took less than five minutes to fill it out on the internet. So that, I consider that pretty much a guarantee that almost anybody else can do it. By the same token, it is vitally important that we get that number up, most likely because of where we are unofficially and what we saw over this last decade as far as population in general. We need a response rate easily in the eighty-five to ninety percent range, if that's possible. There are parts of this country that actually can achieve, have achieved that in the past. It would be great if we could do that here. And so whatever you folks need, we're gonna continue. Felipe and the Planning Department, the Complete Count Committee, which includes city representatives, county, town, other members of the nonprofit community, Bot Conrad from the library. Unfortunately, COVID-19 interfered with a lot of our capabilities because a lot of the people who fill out the census literally go to the library and do that. Or in the other communities around the county can do the same. So it's here in the center that we really need to put the heavy push on and continue to remind people, whatever way, manner, shape, or form we can, that the 2020 census is vital and it's part of our future for the next ten years at a minimum.
Okay, hold on a second, if you would.
Go ahead.
Rosemary has a question. And just so you know, if you find yourself muted, I'm muting you because somebody had a bird in the background. Every time it was going, it was cutting the speaker out, so I didn't know who it was. So stay muted unless you need to say something. And then, you know, I'll make sure if you start talking, I'll unmute you and make sure you get in. Rosemary has a question, what did you have, Rose?
Jay, actually, you're talking about, you know, population decline. It's gonna keep declining simply because of the fact that the taxes around here. I'm talking about county, I'm talking about city, I'm talking about school. And unless we do something, get a rain on everything, it's just gonna keep declining. And yes, we already filled out our census, thank you.
Well, that's, that's good. And I get that, Rosemary, but that's, you know, we're just trying to get the census filled out. And I'm gonna show you one more thing on the screen here. Make sure this goes, if you could, please, tell me if this, you see this? You should now see the city of Batavia webpage. Do you see that?
Yes.
Notice in the right-hand corner, United States Census 2020?
Absolutely.
You can click on that and that will take you to the census. So if you forget the day, the webpages, go to the city of Batavia webpage and you could still get to the census. It's right on our front page.
And it's also on the Genesee County website and under the county planning department. The same thing, Gino, you go to that icon, boom, there it is. You're right inside the U.S. Census system.
And we're gonna try to, and hopefully the news media will pick up on this and try to get this through. Felipe, if you have something to say about it?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Jake, for putting, explaining that to us. So I want to add a few things. First of all, everybody now, you know, can fill it out online, as Gino showed. But at this point, everyone has, that has not responded online, has been mailed a paper form. So if you don't have internet access, if you have a tough time navigating websites and things like that, now you have a paper form. So there's really no excuse for anyone at this point in not returning their census. It's a paper form. If you live alone, it's like nine questions. Basically asking your name, your age, your ethnicity, your race. It's fairly simple to fill out. It, you know, it's a confidential thing, so nobody really has to worry about that kind of thing. And then the other thing I want to mention is Jay touched upon how this really helps us bring in revenue into our county. And it's not just, you know, government grants and those kinds of things. It's actually Medicaid, Medicare, housing vouchers for people, you know, energy assistance, adoption assistance, crime, crime victim assistance. There's all these sorts of, you know, federal programs that fund every person basically in our county. Because one of the other things that it funds is infrastructure. So roads, bridges, that kind of stuff. You know, whenever you have tips money, that comes in through, everything comes in through the census numbers, basically. It's distributed via that formula that the census provides. So and Jade mentioned, there's actually a number associated for every person that is not counted. We lose about thirty thousand dollars over ten years. So if we, if we as a community have lost twenty-five hundred people, that's seventy-five million dollars over four years. It doesn't come into our community. So every, every person you can get to reach out and fill out the census, it helps. One of the efforts that we just did this week, we printed out four hundred flyers to go with the, those grab-and-go meals at Jackson. Another four hundred flyers are gonna go out to those meals at John Kennedy. So that, those will help, you know, at least target the city of Batavia. I know that other communities in Pavilion is actually our best performing community right now. And I know that there's been a lot of outreach by the other public officials out that way. I know the same thing in Pembroke with their superintendent of schools has done a good job. And that community is overperforming. Our county as a whole is about fifty-two percent. But there are some wards, Ward Five, for example, is at forty-two percent, so ten percent lower than the county, the county average. That's significant. Ward Two, as Jay mentioned, and Ward Six is actually a little, is higher than both two and five. But so those are really the places we want to target. There are a lot of people that use government programs in those areas too. So, you know, young children and older folks that rely on all these programs. So it's really important that we count them as well. So I just wanted to add to that.
Great, thank you. Anyone have any questions or, Bob, go ahead?
Numbers handy right there for last census for the county and city.
He wants to know if you have the numbers handy for the?
Are you talking the response rates, Bob?
No, the population, the total population.
The 2010 census was, we were sixty thousand, zero, seven, nine.
And then do they, and that's who replied, or is that just?
No, no, that's, that's what, well, let's put it this way. That's who got enumerated based on who filled out, were, you know, dependents, children, and then the individuals themselves. So that's our total population as of ten years ago.
Do you have the city standing right there?
Felipe, you may have that break down, I do not.
I can if you give me a minute, a second.
Go ahead, look it up. The question, you know, the thing is though, you know, it's hard to tell, do they, do they prorate it? Like if they get sixty percent response, do they then figure there's a lot more than just that there? Or how do they?
No, I believe it, it's considered an actual count, Gino, that's the problem. You know.
So only sixty percent of people respond? Almost half of our people are not, we're not getting credit for that.
Well, that's, it's not, it's not quite that way. You're right, there is a formula, but the idea is that if you're performing at the level to which the other, the rest of the state is performing, that's where they're cutting off the metric as far as the average, so to speak. And that's why we would love to outperform the seventy percent, seventy-two percent that occurred ten years ago, because then they're estimating, estimating will actually work to our advantage.
Right.
The city was, go ahead. Sixty-five.
Well, I'm sorry.
Fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-five people in 2010. That was the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And I think during the census, people that don't respond, they make an address list and send people.
The enumerators, yes, will be coming in the summer and the fall. Uh, it's all been tested somewhat out in the future. I think they, they indicated that they'll, they will, they literally go to each household, um, and put a, a notice, um, literally on the doorstep or in, in, in whatever. I don't believe they're allowed to actually use the postal service boxes, so to speak. Um, but, you know, they will approach every house that has not given a response either online or in paper. They will have that level of detail and that's what the enumerators were going out and doing.
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Yep, that's correct. So if, yeah, if someone doesn't, uh, return, uh, this is called the self-response rate, uh, part of the operation. So the Census Bureau is asking people to self-enumerate. Uh, once that period ends, um, actually, it goes through the entire until like mid-August. Uh, that's when they're really stopped counting out together. But, uh, about the end of May is when they're going to start sending enumerators out, uh, to the folks that haven't responded yet. So there's actually a map, uh, that's in our county. Uh, if you go to the, uh, Genesee County, uh, homepage under news, uh, you may have to click, uh, the next link, because there's a lot of coronavirus news, but, uh, and once you get to the, click on the Census twenty twenty, there, there's actually, I have a live link to the response rate map. So if you're interested to see what, how, where's our performing, you can actually click on there and it's updated every day. Uh, so, uh, because of a lot of the, uh, responses are internet, uh, they get posted right away. Um, the, there is a lag on, uh, putting up the numbers for the paper forms because they obviously have to, uh, run them through. But I would encourage you to take a look at that map. Uh, so under Genesee, you, you can either go through Genesee County Planning or you can go through just the homepage of the county's website. And, um, there's also, uh, that same map is at the Census Bureau. Uh, but then if you go through there, you'll have to, you know, navigate to New York State and then the Genesee County and then kind of drill into it. But, uh, the map that we put up is already at the, the, the Census track level. So you can see, uh, each one of the wards in the city of Batavia.
Other questions for reference to the census? Okay, any other questions in reference to the census? I, I know who the bird is now. Bob? He's smiling. Okay. He's got that little parakeet thing. Um, so anyway, the, uh, it's that important and, and I would hope that the news media and the public really takes this seriously. I, I know there's a lot of privacy concerns, uh, that if you notice the webpage, if you go to it, it's actually a secure page. It's, it's equivalent to online commerce, that kind of private, uh, total security there. So you're not going to get your information stolen or anything like that. And besides, if you've paid taxes, the government probably already has all your information somewhere. Um, go ahead, Felipe.
Yeah, just on the security side, uh, that information cannot be shared with any federal agency. They can't be shared, can't be shared with the FBI or the CIA or ICE or any, anybody, uh, can't access that data for seventy two years. It's called a seventy two year rule. Um, after seventy two years, you've seen, uh, maybe if you watch those genealogy shows, people will research their, uh, you know, ancestors through, uh, you know, the census records. That's because, uh, seventy two years after that census is taken, those records are open for people to, to, to use. So that's, that, you can, you can trust that is secure.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on. Uh, Marty, you have.
You folks, much appreciated.
Yep, you're very welcome. Thank you, guys. Um, update on the fiscal twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget, Marty?
Yes, so I'm going to be giving you information, you know, basic information on the start of the fiscal year with the budget, um, both on, on the budget side and on the cash flow side of, of things for the city's finances. Um, so far, um, some of our revenues have, have come in from the state. I, I wanted to give you the good news first. AMA did come in in March. It was, it's not all of it, but it's about one point five, a little bit more over one point five million dollars. So we did receive that, that is in the bank. Um, so that, that at least, that portion of the state AMA did come in. There's approximately two hundred and fifty thousand that has to come in around September. Um, we got news from the governor's office that other types of A, other types of state aid that comes down, Marches selling money, uh, chips money, V L T funds that they said that they restored. And, and then on the county side, um, on the sales tax, we are going to be looking at, uh, somewhat of a reduction. The preliminary estimate from the county and talking with Matt Landers was about, uh, for us was about forty, thirty eight, forty thousand dollars. Um, on tap, tapping on reduction on sales tax revenue. And that was over and above the AMA reduction on the sales and use tax that goes to towns and villages. Uh, so with that in mind, we are convening, I'm getting with the, the, the department heads on Wednesday. We're going to be going over discussions on what we do at certain levels of reduced revenue. So for example, if we hit, if we, if it looks like we're going to hit a fifteen percent revenue target reduction, we've got certain things we need to do. If we hit thirty percent reduction in revenues, there are certain things we need to do. Um, one of the things that's happening too is, is staff has been very helpful. They're looking at a number of different issues on the cash flow side as well. Because as we, we recall, we have a number of particularly commercial enterprises that may shift when they pay their, uh, property taxes, depending on their ability to pay. It might be later in the year rather than earlier in the year. That could change the picture on our cash flow. So, um, we've got, we have some initial guidance that has gone out and, and we're examining purchases. But we are also going to be having some additional discussion and planning relationship to that. Uh, one question that has been asked me quite often is, is the city going to be furloughing or, or laying off any employees right now? Is there an announcement tonight? The answer is no. Right now, our cash flow is, is in decent situation in relationship to employees, whether they're union or non-union. We are taking a look at particularly, you know, on the part-time employee side. Uh, when do we need to start tapping that? Uh, when would we stop need to start having conversations with union bodies? If we got down below a certain level of reduction, like, for example, we're, if we're heading toward the thirty percent, you know, twenty, thirty percent range of reductions, obviously we need to have the experience. The, uh, again, I'm using this based on personal experience in dealing with oil boom and bust cycles. Um, but it's applies somewhat here. And that is to have the ideas and the things in place so that when we, we see that we're going to hit certain revenue reductions, we're not scrambling around trying to figure out what we're going to do. We're going to have it already laid out and, and, and then once this is done, it's, it's, it's also part, helps us with our planning for next year's budget. Because then we can, uh, dovetail right in to what are we going to be doing in the next year? Because the performance of our revenues this year has a significant impact on our discussions and forecastings for next year as well. So it's, it's really, in a way, it's a kickoff of next year's budget process. But at the same time, we're dealing with our situation now. Because it's not just budget, it's the flow of cash into our accounts. The one good thing, because of the city's, uh, program of investment that it has had over several years, is that our immediate cash flow is in pretty good shape. We're not having any problems feeding payroll. We're not having any problems paying bills. With that said, we are still being cautious with our future purchases. And when we are looking at any kind of program that's going to come into the city, if we're, if something's going to happen, it needs to be paid for with grants, it needs to be paid for with donations. If, if, if they're wanting to start something and it looks to us like it's, it's not as necessary as other items in the budget, we're looking for cost savings. All right, what are we willing to give up in order to be able to have? If you want A, are you willing to be, give up all or part of B? So, and we're, and we're also being very careful, I want to be very careful. And the message can, will continue to go out to U S council members and the department heads and the public that we are going to watch this extremely closely. We will have a carefully crafted plan and it will be shared back, uh, to the members of city council and to staff and to the public so that we're completely transparent, uh, with the public's funds.
And V L T money is still up in the air. I mean, he says we're going to get it, but there's no guarantees at this point.
Right, every, every piece of aid that is out there right now, um, that has not been paid to the city is subject to the governor's recall. And the first recalled decision-making, he's got two or three of them at least during our fiscal year. And the first one is, is, uh, the end of this month. So we are waiting and watching this week to see where the hit, the hammer, so to speak, is going to drop as far as holding back on aid to municipal.
And, and we're all, the whole county, we're all talking about it. Um, they talk about it regularly. They have weekly calls. They're, they, they're all expecting some kind of hit in the revenue stream. And we just don't know how much. It, it's still up in the air. I mean, we can guesstimate it. Um, hopefully, I'm hoping their estimates are overzealous and that we're going to, we're going to be closer to, uh, even line than we are going to be in debt. But, uh, I, you know, at this point, um, like Marty said, we have plans in place. Um, and when we know where we're going to fall within that scale, we have certain levels and certain plans we can pull out and we, and we're kind of pre-preparing. And if we don't need them, then that's fine. If we do need them, they're there in place and we're not scrambling like we were when we lost the V L T money, we were kind of caught off guard. So now we're going to think ahead.
Right, right. And, and the last time that I went through a, a deep one, that was about a three-year time period at a previous location, the re- revenues went way down. And we got, we let, we set up a four-stage at that particular incident and we ended up in stage three of four of that one. So that taught an important lesson that when you get a, a deep cycle type of downturn like we're dealing with here, is to have multiple, not just planning for what we have now, but planning for what we could be looking at, you know, in B, C, D or E. So, so that's the idea and, and to make sure that we're touching. The nice thing about doing that is that protects us. We're not scrambling around on our core services. We're protecting our core services by doing it this way.
And, and by core services, you mean police, fire, public works, that kind of thing?
Yes, our core business services, our core services to the public.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Marty in reference to that? It's more of just like an update. I mean, we're not, we're not really going into those contingency plans right yet, but it, it is something to have planned for in case we need it.
And we will be coming back to council and sharing that as those plans are developed.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, um, the next thing is the purchasing manual?
Okay, the purchasing manual, this is a yearly thing we need to do. We had this coming up on the end of the fiscal year and then COVID nineteen came along. There was, there was a, a request from one or more department heads to see if we could change the per diem rate under travel. And, uh, we, I've got that still on the shelf for next year, but felt in a, in financial decision. Uh, because of the situation here is so uncertain economically, that we'll stay with our current, um, rates right now. But we'll definitely keep that recommendation. They were at, what the request was, was to update our, our travel and per diem rates to, to the state's rates and the IRS rates. And at right, right now, because of the financial uncertainty, we decided, well, it's better just to keep them where they're at right now. But we can always come back to you for amendment to the purchasing manual as, as soon as the clouds start to clear here. Other than that, we did change and appreciate staff's help. Uh, the li- list of individuals that are eligible to sign is, the, the different departments have updated, so.
Any questions on the purchasing manual?
Uh, yeah, Gino, I, I have a couple of, one, Marty, you have quite a list of people responsible for purchasing. Uh, once they sign in our authorization, is there oversight on that? And two, uh, because of the crunch we're in, have you put any limits on, uh, purchasing?
Yes, to both questions. Uh, the first, the answer to the first question is, first part of that, yes. Uh, individuals in the different departments have authority and it's important to update those authorizations so that we don't have people who may have moved on or retired or whatever still on the list. We have the appropriate people to sign because part of the process, they submit their requisitions. Uh, the sign-offs on the requisitions do, and purchase orders do come through the, uh, finance office and the city manager's office. And in addition to that, under the current financial situation to your second part, right now, we, purchases of a hundred dollars or more, or over a hundred dollars, uh, come through my office. Or actually, the, the appropriate language in the guidance is, requests to, uh, make purchases in excess of a hundred dollars require a purchase requisition that is reviewed and approved by my office. So, and we have that and the finance office has those, they share them with me. I make sure we. Go ahead.
Yeah, very good, Marty. And I think it's important for the public to know that, uh, the finance officer and U S manager are keeping a tight oversight on all city finances, purchasing and all that. You know, we're, we're really watching the nickels here. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, any other questions on the purchasing manual? Or the purchasing policy, I should say, basically is what it is. Rosemary, go ahead.
Can you?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, Bob, we did that years ago. It used to be almost unlimited what they could do. And then we decided to put that in. They could, it has to go through the manager and there was a limit as to what they could purchase.
Yeah, there's layers. There's several layers. I mean, I remember doing it myself, putting in a requisition and then it had the chief forwarded on and then it would get finance approval and then city manager approval all the time. So between the department head and all these people that are listed are basically under their department head guidance. And the department head's going to see that and then he's going to forward it on to Marty and then that, the city hall staff does, does their thing. So it pretty much goes through almost two or three layers before it finally gets approved and, and allowed to get, uh, the item gets purchased. So, and, and if it needs, if it meets the threshold, has to go to so many bids or request for, uh, bids or whatever. There's all a process through that. Um, I'm sure, um, Patty is familiar with it, similar to like the school system. They had, uh, anything like that is very well, uh, very strongly regulated and nobody can buy pretty much anything without, um, the city manager or some department head knowing about it ahead of time. And it has to be within the guidelines of the budget in the first place. So a lot of, lot of safeguards there. Um, Marty, any other questions on that? Rosemary, you had another one? I can't, can you unmute yourself, Rosemary? I can't unmute you.
No.
Okay, I can hear you now. Did you have another question?
No, I, I, I lowered my hand.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
All right, it's down, all right. Um, next thing we'll go into is the, uh, New York State Department of Transportation Agreement for Richmond and Harvester Avenue?
Yeah, I think, I think Matt should be on the phone for that.
Yeah, Matt's here.
Good evening, council members. As most of you're aware, the, uh, city applied for federal highway funds for Richmond Avenue and Harvester Avenue. Those funds were awarded this past year and this is the first step in starting the process of that construction work. So the state has, all, all of the federal highway money comes down through New York State DOT and they have released the first, uh, layer of funds, which is three hundred and, um, three hundred fifty eight thousand nine hundred dollars. And that goes through the, uh, initial scoping, preliminary design, the detailed design and any right-of-way work. So this is the first layer. It's an agreement with New York State. And basically what it is saying is that the city enters into this agreement, we're going to do the project and the state is, is through their side of the agreement verifying that they will reimburse the city through the federal highway funds to a level of eighty percent. So that's the way we always go through the, or approach the project is that eighty percent level. But I would also, uh, let council know that, uh, there's another funding stream. It's called Marchesselli Funding through New York State. And while we never are assured a hundred percent of receiving Marchesselli money, we have never done a project and not received it. And that Marchesselli money reduces that local twenty percent share down to five percent. So we will be applying for those funds as well. Uh, quite often there's a lag before we know for sure whether we receive that or not. Uh, again, we feel this is a very important project. Richmond Avenue, uh, is probably the street that we receive the most comments about as far as condition issues. And, uh, this will be, go a long way towards, uh, solving it. I would also just note that the actual construction is not until twenty twenty two. Uh, we have no way of, of moving that forward. That is when the federal funds will be available and, uh, that project will be done. Uh, again, we combine those projects, those two streets, they were originally awarded separately. Uh, but we were able to combine them and for a construction season. but we were able to combine them and for a construction season of 2022.
Any questions for Matt in reference to that?
Yeah, Matt, what's your plan for the next two years till you start construction? It's pretty rough. Are you going to just patch or what are we going to do?
Yeah, we will be addressing the street. Actually, we've been waiting for the hot mix asphalt plants to open up, which they have. And then we've been looking forward to days where it doesn't rain all day. The Richmond Avenue will receive a more intensive patching, crack repair, if you will. We will be picking our milling machine up there. Some of the real damaged areas, we'll be doing a limited milling and then hot mix asphalt repair to hold the street together for over the course of the next two years.
Well, with the longer daylight now, more daylight we have in the days and it's really an essential repair, can we put more men in the job or have two shifts working possibly get some of the guys out of the house and get them back to work full-time?
That's a conversation that I've had with the city manager. As you're aware, through the governor's pause, we did reduce to fifty percent. We are looking to real, reallocate the highway crew. And whether we bring that up or move that around and move more efficient, that's something we're looking at. Right now, I know that County Highway has done the same thing. They're starting to increase their crews with the summer, you know, summer upon us and our short construction window to get that worked on. It's something we're looking at very closely right now and we're probably making decisions sooner rather than later.
If I'm not mistaken-
Very good, because I know some- I was just saying, I know some of the employees and they're just chomping at the bit to go back to work and, you know, they feel like they'd rather be out there working than sitting around the house and doing nothing or whatever. But, you know, there's some pretty responsible people and they don't want to see us get too far behind either. So, thanks, Matt.
Absolutely, and it's obviously, it's very difficult to have a heavy equipment operator do much work from home. So we agree with that.
Rosemary.
Matt, the asphalt that you use, is there oil mixed in with it?
Yes, it's a petroleum product.
Yes, and it was told to me by some of the workers from the old Delpens when they did the roads and resurfaced things, they never used oil because the oil was making this slip and just disintegrate during the winter a lot of times.
Yeah, I'm not sure council wants to get into the whole discussion of the makeup of the asphalt pavements. I guess I would refer back a little bit-
It was a lot better years ago than what the hell it is now. I mean, that's my point.
Yeah, the process of asphalt is that they have lowered the content of actual asphalt material. That is very common. And, you know, you would used to see, we would call it bleeding or leaching. You would get out of the road, sometimes it'd get a little slick and on a real hot summer day or start bubbling. There was those higher contents of asphalt in there. The general approach now that DOT has and which we are bound to use with most of our projects is a lower asphalt content pavement and that creates a more rigid, stiff pavement. However, it's not quite as flexible, so it is certainly subject to some of those failures. Term we use is delamination. Some of the problems we used to see where we call shoving and rutting where that you would get washboard type effects near stop signs, traffic signals. You see that much less now and now we get what we call delamination where the layers of the pavement come apart a little bit. So it is just a different problem of a similar product.
Okay, no, I thought I'd have said. Thank you.
And Matt, just so you're aware, I'm pretty sure that we have some leeway being a municipality. Obviously, roads could be essential. So I think, you know, Marty can explain it, you guys can have that conversation. But the state is pretty much leaving the municipalities some leeway as far as getting workers back and things like that. They're more concerned with restaurants and other businesses where people are going to gather and congregate without masks on, whereas employees working on a road crew with the proper safety equipment on, spread out apart across the roadway, you know, they're giving us the leeway to go forward on stuff like that. So you're going to probably find you're going to have a little more leeway than you think you have on it.
Absolutely. When the initial outbreak happened, we really split the crew in half and part of that was to try to create that hard barrier. So if we did get a coronavirus case, that it didn't spread through the whole department, so we had that hard barrier. Now that we're on the downside, and again, with the summer coming, we have to get back after it. So absolutely agree.
Yep, I agree. Rosemary? I can't unmute her for some reason.
How's that?
Okay, yeah, whenever you raise your hand, I lower it for you, Rosemary. And then you're thinking you're lowering it and you're raising it again, I think you have a question. All right, so we're good. All right, anybody else have a question for Matt in reference to the DOT agreement? Okay, so the DOT agreement and the purchasing manual are both resolutions. Are we in consensus to move both of those to the next business meeting for an official vote?
Yes.
Okay, I see all heads nodding, it makes sense. Now, selecting the engineering firm is for the same project that we just talked about, Matt?
Yeah, this absolutely piggybacks on the project. First and foremost, we need to hire the design professionals for this project. We went through a process of requesting proposals from a whole list that the DOT has of pre-approved engineering firms. We received ten responses. There was a committee of four people from the city, the city manager, the director of public work, myself, the superintendent of maintenance, Ray Thor, and then superintendent of water and wastewater, Phil Davis, who went through, reviewed the submittals, ranked them and scored them. Then today, we had a Zoom meeting, much like we are today, with New York State DOT, reviewed our findings and came up with a consensus, which they were approved of our process, the way we did it, that it was fair and appropriate. We have not made this comment or this public at all yet. So unfortunately, I need to keep council at bay a little bit as far as the name of the firm that we're recommending because we have not reached out to them yet. However, long before the business meeting, you will receive the name of the firm and the contract that we're negotiating to start this project and begin the design process for Richmond and Harvester Avenue.
Okay, so what we will do is, if we approve this to the next business meeting, before that business meeting or way before, we'll have all the facts within the next couple of days. So you'll know if there's any problems or any questions, we can debate that at that time and either table it or vote on it or whatever we need to do. So any questions for Matt in reference to the design firm? Obviously, there are a list of people provided by the state, pretty much have to pick one from that list, I assume, right, Matt?
Yes, that's correct. It's an LDSA list, every several years, New York State DOT goes through and creates the shortlist. And again, we're very fortunate where we live, between Buffalo and Rochester, there's a long list of certainly qualified professional engineering firms that can do the work for us.
My question, Matt, you'll be picking one company. Do you also pick an alternate in case a company has a problem?
No, we do not pick an alternate. If for some reason, again, that's why I'm hesitant to tell you the name of the firm right now. If we went through the negotiation process for the next couple of weeks and for some reason we couldn't come to an agreement, we would go back and review our list and go to the next person down. And so council would only ever see that one name. We would have that ironed out and, you know, these firms are all more than capable of doing this project, have more than enough resources to do it. We would just make sure that was ahead before city council ever saw it.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? So we're all in consensus to move this resolution for the engineering firm to the business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, it's moved. Marty, is there anything else that we wanted to talk about?
No, but one thing I did want to say, an observation to that, to the engineers, it was very, very striking that we had as many of, what, ten or twelve high-quality engineering firms all hungry for the work. That seems to us to be an indication on, several of them are saying in their proposals, the work's pretty light. So I would say that we're going to, the sooner we can get things opened up, I think, and get these people back to work on a lot of projects, the better off we're going to be.
And ironically enough, this is one of those projects that we would benefit from by having the census filled out. I mean, this is the aid and this is state highway. So, you know, our roads are in need of repair and it's very, very important that we fill out that census and everyone in the city and in the county gets counted so that we can, you know, that gives us some leeway and some clout in a sense to get funding for our projects, for our road projects, our bridges and any major things we need to get done. So it's very, very important. We all benefit from that. It's two minutes to fill out this form. Please, if I can emphasize enough, please fill out your 2020 census form. At that point, we're pretty much ready to end the meeting. Does anyone have anything to add real quick before we leave?
Yeah, I have a question for Matt.
Go ahead.
Man, I have a lady on Clinton Street that her neighbor has roosters, chickens and ducks. And she's selling eggs out of her house. I mean, how do I respond to that? I mean, can people have roosters in their backyard in the city?
Yes, actually, you can have some farm animals in the city. I guess what I would suggest is tomorrow, why don't I give you a call, get some details on it and we can reach back out to the person and get some details to him.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to remind people to please, if you are out, you're in the grocery stores, convenience stores, any place that there's a group of people, please wear your mask so we can protect other people. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Motion adjourned, Mr. President.
Okay, motion to close by Bob and seconded by- Ms. Christian, since your hand is constantly raised, I'm going to take that button away, I think. All right, call roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino? Finale?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Hold on, let me unmute him. Okay, Al, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Briggs?
He's unmuted.
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Hraz?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Meeting's adjourned. Be safe, everyone, and we'll see you next time.
Okay. Be safe.
Good night.
Good night.